Get the stress out of our system. The regular average city council meeting scheduled for five P M. May fifth and now come to roll call.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Councilor Rousey.
Here.
Councilor Kovenin.
Here.
Mayor Byssolovich.
Here.
Approval of minutes, city council meeting April twenty first, twenty twenty and approval of city council workshop, April twenty third, twenty twenty. Anybody have any questions or changes? If not, call for motion, and we approve those minutes.
I'll move.
Motion made by Lillis, so I have support.
Support.
Support by Kovenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Approval of tonight's agenda, we have a couple additions under new business. That's the agreement. Conveyance of real estate, that's between the school and the city, right?
Correct.
Okay, that'd be number eight. And number nine. Agreement with Saint Louis County for that is assistance with sidewalk construction on county state aid streets in Evolith.
So, I think somewhere in your stack of papers, excuse me, is revised agenda I sent out with those three items.
Oh, okay.
That didn't include these last two items. So, I'm gonna hand this to Brian and he can answer this. Make sure the bottom is right. So, the two new ones are gonna be, um. Eleven and twelve.
Oh, okay. Eleven and twelve. Anybody have any other changes or additions? If not, call for a motion that we approve tonight's agenda with those changes. So moved. It's made by Kovenin, do I have a support? Support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. I don't think we have any appointments or presentations tonight. And we have anybody who wants to address the city council with business other than the public hearing? If not, consent agenda. Anybody have any questions on any of the items? I, I would just like to add, uh, just one condition to item four. I would like to find out what this mobilization entails. If, uh, everybody will trust in me to have a chat with them and find out what's going on. And to ma- make sure it kinda coincides with what we have going on there. I think that's a great idea. Prove that with that condition.
Mayor, I do have one item on that number four as well that, uh. There's an insurance policy there for Coach Anderson's activity on the property.
Mm-hmm.
City needs to be named as an additional insurance policy. So, as long as we own it.
Yeah.
We're gonna mobilize there and council proof that that's perfectly fine, but, uh, but since we own it and we're using it temporarily, we should be named as an additional insurance policy.
I'd just like to make sure too that, uh, you know, there's gonna be a lot of heavy traffic on that road. And you know what that's gonna look like?
Oh, yes.
And I just wanna know what's gonna be up there, you got a few businesses there, different things, so. Any other questions on the consent agenda? Other than that change, I will, uh, get ahold of Coach Anderson and find out exactly, get a map, what they're looking at. If not, call for a motion, and we prove tonight's consent agenda with those changes. It's made by Rousey, do I have a support?
Support.
Worked by Lillis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, at this time, I will suspend the regular city council meeting and open a public hearing for the twenty twenty Garfield Street renovation project. This time, the public hearing is now open. So, Jerry, you wanna kinda? Take the lead, maybe you and Elk, and what we're looking at?
Yeah, sure, um, we're looking at doing the four hundred through the seven hundred block of Garfield Street this year. Uh, we received a few grants along the way. Um, but we're gonna be doing total reconstruction curb to curb, most of the sidewalk. Um, it's hard to pick and choose some of the bad sidewalks, so we do have it up in our bid for totally reconstruction, including sidewalks. So, we are doing an assessment on most of the blocks on Garfield Street that we can. And, uh, that's where we're at right now.
Anybody from the audience have any questions on the project?
I'm a taxpayer, uh, lives on Garfield, several questions. When is the project expected to start? And what is the curb house assessment?
Well, we haven't bid out the project yet, we have to do that after the council agrees tonight to bid that out, so we're not sure when it will start.
Would it be anticipated sometime this summer?
Yes. We wanna do it this summer.
This summer?
Yeah, it's a bid time, but.
And what is the expected assessment?
Um, what's your address?
Seven twenty.
Your, um, two thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. And that's just the proposed assessment, they could come down, they could offer, it depends on the bids. On what we're forecast in the next year.
So, you don't have a, how long is it expected to go, what's your anticipated timeframe for completion?
I would imagine most of the summer. It's gonna take, it's gonna take a while to do all of it.
Would that start after the fourth of July? Probably by the time if you accepted bids and.
We'd like to get going before the fourth of July. But, I don't know if it'll all fall into place.
As far as the assessments go, until we bid it out, then we'll know hard numbers. What, I've heard a lot of speculation bids might be low and that's, works out good for the property owner. But until we actually put the bids out, then we can have another hearing and see what it really looks like.
In these areas, the utilities in these areas are all really bad shape. The sewers, we couldn't even tell about it, it's been so brought up and, uh, out of position that, uh. So, it really, it really needs to be done.
Isn't that the last old street in town really that hasn't had any major maintenance? Other than maybe an overlay and some curb?
We have a few more, there's a few more in, in town, but, but this is one of the bigger ones.
That's what I thought, that's one of the longest.
Let me just add two, so there's water, sanitary sewer, and a storm sewer system that being, being replaced with this.
Right.
Um, and then, kind of, uh, if the city called for bid, uh, on that project, they, twenty days of advertising, as soon as you opened the bid, it'd be about the end of the year, twenty ninth, fifth week, if we got, uh, paper this Friday. Um, and, uh, probably takes two weeks after that to start, so you'd be looking at mid-June if it was awarded. After your first meeting in June, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So, mid-June would be a very soon, you could call it optimistic, we assume the contractor can start, late June would be more likely.
What is, uh, this project, what do you anticipate, three, four months to do that?
Yeah, it's, it's October.
Yeah, that's what I was kinda, kinda wondering, some of the projects we started a little later in the year. This is such a huge one.
Yeah, and that's one of the reasons we'd like to get going on it since it is a big project, it'd be nice to get the whole project done this year and wrap it up this year.
I'm just curious to see how the, the bids would come out, I guess that's gonna tell a tale, really. Does anybody else from the audience have any questions on that project?
How about trees?
Uh, some of the trees in your area will have to be taken down just because, uh, storm sewer is so deep in that area.
I've got one that's as old as my building, I'd like, I'd like to see one.
It most likely will be that one on the corner.
Yeah, the lower corner of the building.
Yeah, storm sewer is so deep in that area, it's over twenty feet and there's no way we can say it holds fifty seven. Some of them will come down, and the one that come down, we, we can replace.
Yeah, like the four hundred plus? Yeah.
Yeah.
It would be a lot of gold. They're all the trees, this is my special piece. And then, there's one thing, uh, my basement has a lot out. There used to be a ash, uh, ash chute that take ash on the, on the boiler. That, uh, it plumps up on four feet. Pretty much up to the property, I just want, I just want to be aware of that. Whoever gets the job, I'll negotiate, I'll relocate my water lines. And I'd like to add a couple of storm sewer laterals, because I changed my roof drains, the drain out. Right now, that one runs down the sidewalk, I'd like to have the storm sewer and a catch basin. Close it.
Yeah, that's something you would have to negotiate with the contractor, so, obviously.
See, my question's basically, it's open, it's open to work.
I think once, if this project goes, the bids get awarded, we would have a public meeting with the contractor, because they'd like to know those concerns. Like we did in West Evolith, some of the drainage, they got some real good tips from the residents out there. To tweak the engineering on some of that stuff where water would accumulate and go. And that way, if there's things like that, you can talk to them directly, then they know. Anyone else have any questions? If, if not, I will con- conclude the public hearing and I'll reconvene the city council meeting. I don't like those spies. Well, thank you everybody for participating, it really, it really helps when you come and tell us what's going on, you live there. You bet. We have no unfinished business, now we'll scrubber the new business. Resolution approving plans and advertising for bids for twenty twenty Garfield Street utility improvement projects. Call for a motion that we go out for bids for this project?
So moved.
It's made by Kovenin, do I have a support? Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. We didn't permanently fill that position yet, did we Jerry, or?
Not yet, internally, we've been having some guys ship.
Oh, okay.
And with this stuff that's going on, we can't have, you know, uh.
If we accept Paul's retirement, then we can permanently post it, assuming.
Then we'll go out.
Okay.
You know how many years of service?
He has twenty-one or twenty-two.
Thanks.
I thought he had more than that.
He was only a few years before me.
Oh, is that right? Anybody have any other questions? Jerry, if not, call for a motion, and we accept retirement from Paul Tuscan, operator maintenance worker. And what would be the effect if they just, today, today, okay? Motion made by Rousey, you have a support?
Support.
Support by Kovenin, any further discussion? All in favor? Yep.
Aye.
Right.
Aye. Yes, we include letter of thanks. Item number three, which we've been working on for a while, COVID nineteen business assisting bridge loan guidelines. Anybody have any questions? On this, I think, uh, I appreciate, Brian, you and John, step in and, uh, look at these and make the recommendations. Cause I, I know you can move a lot faster than the feds or the state. Anybody have any questions on the program here, the application, or?
Perhaps for public consumption, uh, the council's considering, um, um, approving this request, which will then go to the ADA for final approval as well. But, uh, we're looking to allocate a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which we intend to, um, allow business owners that have been affected by the governor's order, the state home order, to close. Or, uh, impacted in other ways, uh, to apply for a, what's called a bridge loan. If they've applied for assistance from the federal or state government and, and have not received that assistance, the council felt that it was important that we at the local level should try to do something for the businesses that are impacted. Um, and so we come up with this program to, uh, help tide the business owners over until they get, uh, their federal or state assistance.
Yeah, this would be money that would be used for, I think, economic development anyway, with the local businesses, so it's.
Yes.
It's getting to really be a hardship for these businesses. And it don't look like there's any site from what I hear from some of the businesses, they're having a lot of trouble. Lots of trouble.
And, uh, like we said, I think we could pull it fast.
Yes. I think you two guys can, uh, know what you're dealing with and can make recommendations a lot faster.
Something like about two weeks is something that have parameters that should be, uh, from application time to notification or approval or not.
Well, the whole thing is, I mean, you got, you got the communication is right there. It's not online and going through the process and waiting. And you know how slow the internet has gotten lately.
Well, I suspect that we will have some further information forthcoming once this program is approved, um, submitted. Uh, currently, the minimum loan, um, application amount would be one thousand dollars. The maximum loan, uh, application amount is up to ten thousand dollars, uh, per applicant. Subject to the availability of funds, again, we're, um, we're committing a hundred and seventy thousand dollars towards this, uh, venture. Um, as the mayor alluded to, we're, we're trying to streamline the process as much as possible and still meet our, our legal obligations. So, uh, once we get, uh, the program finalized, I'm sure that we will get information out to all the businesses, um, so that we can start the application, or start accepting the application.
I was hoping the federal money would kinda go to the cities and could be distributed in this manner. You know what I mean, that's.
I would, yeah, that would have been a, a really good thing.
Put into this program and whatever you used, you use and they, whatever you didn't spend, you can have it back, you know what I mean? But, it's gotta go through the, the maze. Anyone else have any questions? Call for a motion that we approve the COVID nineteen business assistant bid bridge loan guidelines.
I'll move.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support? Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number four. Consider quotations for twenty twenty curb sidewalk and pavement replacement. Jerry, you're recommending three D concrete again?
Yes, I am.
Anybody have any questions or anything? I'm gonna call for a motion that we go with the public works director's recommendation. And give the contract to three D. Motion made by Rousey, do I have a support? Support, worked by Kovenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Item number five, consider quotations for furnishing fertilizers, fungicides, and insecticides for the golf course. Holy man, Jerry, that's. I better get new glasses, I got a hard time reading this.
Uh, we went, uh, this year, we went, uh, more liquid, we saved a couple thousand dollars on getting a lot of, uh, li- liquid product. And, a lot of places, it's getting tougher and tougher to find, uh, fertilizer in, in flakes anymore. So, it'd be nice if we could get those top three in liquid too, but right now, we can't. And those are all fairway, the top three are all fairway, uh, fertilizers. And, uh, we just can't get them in liquid right now, so. But we saved a lot of money, like, all the other ones are, are for the greens.
Mm-hmm.
And throughout the years that we, we sold, and, uh, we went to all liquid and that's it, that's quite a bit. Hopefully, hopefully someday we can turn over a fairway, uh, liquid stool.
So, the first three are all, um, flake, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Brand newer.
All right, next, Testman Company, have you ever used them before, Jerry, or?
Yeah, we've got product from them.
Oh, okay.
Both of these two, we have got product from the past, uh, the barns, they did not, not bid this. But if you're looking at, I know it's a little confusing, uh, one, two, and three, and then number seventeen, I had that wrong down on the bottom. But number seventeen, I'm suggesting reindeers. And then, uh, the rest of them, four through, um, sixteen, and eighteen are all liquid products, those will go by Testman's. And a lot of times when we bid this, we bid it so we can pick the cheaper of the products, if they're the same product. And usually, it's over five thousand, that's all.
Do they allow you to bid it that way?
Yeah.
Bid by line item, or?
Yep, they all do it line items, we've been doing that for years.
Oh, I didn't know if he made you take the whole quote, you know what I mean, or?
Right, we don't have to take the whole quote, we can pick one from one person, the rest from somebody else. They're just glad that they.
Anybody else have any questions, Jerry? Otherwise, I'll call for a motion that we accept his recommendation. So moved. Motion made by Kovenin, do I have a support? Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Item number six, resolution accepting donation for the library. Got a donation from Pam and Greg Chapman in memory of Joyce Chapman. And that's, it's a really nice, it's a substantial amount of money they donated. And if no one has any questions, I'd like to call for motion that we accept this resolution and send a letter of thanks to Pam and Greg Chapman for this donation to the Evolith Library. Motion made by Rousey, we have a support? Support. Support by Kovenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Item number seven, request from the chief to sell forfeited vehicle in the usual manner. Chief, speaking of vehicles, were there any light at the end of the tunnel for our replacement squads?
Well, we're still on the hold, Mayor, um, the plans were shut down due to the COVID, um, situation. However, I received some information that they may have started up, um, Monday. So, I'm keeping my fingers crossed and hopefully we will see a couple squads this month.
All right.
So, do we, we don't have any use for, uh, two thousand six Mercedes Benz?
Has a lot of guilt in it.
I asked that question already, Brian. Fuck, city staff guard I could be, you know, Benz. Lead the parade. Anybody else have any questions? If not, call for motion that we grant the chief's request to sell this vehicle?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do you have a support?
Support.
Worked by Kovenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Okay, we have three items here, eight, nine, and ten, that involve the property dealings with the school versus, uh, for the new school. Do we have to take these one at a time, or can we take them?
Take them all together.
No, yeah, one at a time.
One at a time?
And they have, we have that right.
Item number eight, agreement regarding school property, district property, anybody have any questions? If not, call for motion that we enter into this agreement?
So moved.
Motion made by Kovenin, do I have a support? Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Item number nine, first amendment to agreement regarding school district property. Jack, you want, just wanna explain what that amendment was?
Oh.
So, everybody in the audience knows.
The amendment, um, changes the marketing period. Prior agreement indicated that they were gonna start marketing the buildings two years after they vacated them. But now, we met with the school board, um, for locations and the superintendent, and they're gonna start the marketing period now, which gives you, the city, the opportunity of the right of first refusal starting now. And also to weigh in pretty heavily now on any offers they get from the building. So, it's really important that that date got moved from two years after they vacated to right now. And then also, we detailed some items that the city will require for anybody interested in purchasing any of these properties, so we can determine whether it's a comfortable or fit for the community.
That sounds good. Anybody else have any questions? If not, call for motion that we approve this amendment?
So moved.
Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support? Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Number ten, the right of first refusal. Anybody want any clarification for the audience on that, or just pretty self-explanatory? If not, call for motion that we approve item number ten, right of first refusal. Motion made by Rousey, support. Worked by Kovenin, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Item number eleven. Resolution authorizing conveyance of real estate. And that's involves the school property? Anybody else have any questions on that item? If not, the call for a motion that we approve this resolution? So moved.
This resolution goes to joint power board?
Yes, so the sale of the property, which we, at the time, which we're making some progress on, is property being purchased by the joint board.
Can you make the motion?
Yes.
Don, are you seconding it?
I certainly will.
Motion made by Kovenin, support by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. Item number twelve, cooperative agreement between Saint Louis County and the city of Evolith. And that is for two years for the side sidewalk maintenance assistance we do get.
Yep.
On the county state aid streets.
Right.
And that's, county's been really, really good helping us out on that. Anybody have any questions on that agreement for two years?
So, that's fifteen thousand max per year that they're contributing, much?
Yep, and that's, they, they bumped it up by five more thousand.
Very much, very much appreciated.
It is.
I did make sure they knew that.
Yeah, the county's been really good to work with, you know, a lot of stuff. Gotta come in, the staff, commissioners, they're pretty good. Anybody else have any questions? If not, a call for a motion that we approve this agreement between Saint Louis County and the city of Evolith. Motion made by Lillis, do I have a support? Worked by Rousey, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. That concludes new business. Do we have, anybody have any commission reports or liaison from city meetings? If not, anybody have anything, uh, to bring up, Brian?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Johnny?
You know how much I try to keep my mouth, sometimes.
This is the place to, this is the place to open it up.
I, I want to mention this, the sad gas, you know, one of our gas stations in town, which is now closed. Uh, it offered a wonderful service that you don't see in northern Minnesota too much in anywhere anymore. Were that three young gentlemen who knew what they were doing, very polite, come out, pump your gas, wash your window, whatever. You don't see that anymore, anywhere. And, and now it's, I have a lot of elderly people, me included, enjoy going everywhere, when it's twenty, boy, you didn't have to get out and pump your gas. These young men come out and took care of you, and in a wink, in a blink of an eye, they were gone. And in a wink, in a blink of an eye, they were gone. So without crying, I'll tell them, thank you very much if you haven't catched us for your service. You were a brave asset for the city.
You know, you had a lot of, a lot of people from other communities who came to that station just for that service.
Didn't get that service anymore.
No, and that's kind of what we all grew up with, we had service stations.
It was a shame.
It's so, it's so bad. Now you got to listen to a whole bunch of commercials while you're pumping your own gas.
It's actually crazy.
Driving your freaking nuts.
Who's talking?
Yeah. Babbles the hell out of you. Fucking rap, rap music blaring and.
That's basically the, the, you know, my chest. You know, I just think it's wrong.
Joe, you have anything to add?
Um, no, I think I'm gonna let you do the talking on this one because you voice my opinion with the two.
Well, I guess I'm gonna say one other thing first. You know, I, I would like to see us have a little preference on what, with our vendors, Chinese goods. If they have an alternative to a product made in China, I don't care if it's made in Cuba, I'd rather buy it from them than these Chinese because I think they did the world injustice of what's going on here. And when we grew up, they were the worst evil there was at government. And if we could make that a preference with our vendors, if we have a choice, I don't care if it costs a little more, I'd just as soon get it from.
I believe that's in bidding documents as well, that they're leaving, we can buy all the things.
Because we, we had that thing in the eighties when mining business was under a lot of foreign imports and we had buy North American. And we had some of the vendors, I remember tried to sneak pipe from Korea.
And stabbed right on there.
Employees caught it when the trucks came in and we turned around five semis. The truckers were happy because they got a load back, didn't have to look for a load. They were laughing all the way out. Yeah, turn those trucks around. They kept coming in, they checked them, and turned them right around, sent them out of there. Like I say, that, that's what maybe we have to do again, take care of ourselves. But you know, we've, we've got this, this virus and everybody's making sacrifices. And I'm, I'm not seeing fairness in the sacrifices because this one size fits all mentality that's out there. Minnesota's comprised of a number of different economies. Right now, we got the mining business going into a slowdown period, who knows how long it'll take. And I took an oath of office, like a lot of people, and just to protect the public health, welfare, and safety in the community. And looking at the discrepancies, the, the special privileges granted to certain businesses under this program, how can you go into a home improvement store, 300 people, elbow to elbow, and you can't go in a hair salon with two people? You know, it's, and that's involves personal hygiene for some of these elderly people. They get their hair washed, grooming, they don't have that access. Because if you want a haircut now, you got to go to Fargo. That's your closest place. Fargo, North Dakota, and a dog can get a haircut in Minnesota, can't. So I'm, I'm looking at this stuff here and, like I say, it's, it's beginning to be a public health and safety. People are stressed economically and you know what happens there? You have mental issues and there's physical issues. And I think it's us to help protect the people. And this is a regional solution. And like I say, when, it seems to be if you're a big business, you're okay, if you're a small business. And I did get an email from Detective Director Rams on Minneapolis and St. Paul, got like $300 million, but they don't know how to get the money down to rural Minnesota. So I'm looking at this and, you know, I took an oath of office here. And I'm looking at what's essential to the community because we have to protect the citizens. And I, I think I was gonna work on a comprehensive plan, taking into social distancing. And everybody is well aware of what preventive measures and how to act. And if the governor does not relax these standards, I don't mean letting somebody sell hair tonic out of their beauty shop on the curb, that, a plan that will gradually reopen the businesses if there's nothing changed by 18th to start on the 19th then. Because I, I made a pledge to do that and I can't, if I follow these guidelines, I can't fulfill my promise with the people in the community. And everything should be regional. It's not fair. The small businesses are getting shoved by the side and now the mining company's slowing down. There's gonna be nothing here. So I'd like maybe to have a special meeting sometime next week and I'll outline everything I'm thinking of and what we can do to save our community. And I think I'm within our authority by the city charter and the citizens of Evolith. And if it doesn't work out, maybe the court's got to decide. Because if it's endangering the public by taking these drastic measures, like I say, it's, the metro's one area, rural Minnesota is other, and we all have different economies. And now our backbone economy is recession here. And the help we got years ago was unemployment extensions. We don't need that kind of help. We need job stability help. And like I say, I, I just don't understand the thinking here. You go in some of these places, 300, 400 people, and the next place they see, you can't have two people. I just don't get it. In a small community, you depend on these services to a great extent, especially the vulnerable people. And people are very well versed on what's going on here, what steps to take, we watch their distances and. I went into QuickTrip the other day coming from Duluth, and they had the most simple solution to that. They had X's on the floor with red tape. Nobody's gonna read a sign, but you see that X, what clicks in your head? Oh yeah, we got to stand apart. Everybody's standing on the X and walking around the store keeping a distance, you know, it's such a simple solution. Because you've got signs all over bombarding everybody with information. But if nobody has any objections, I was gonna put a little plan together and maybe have a special meeting next week, we all take a look at and see what we can do to help our businesses here. Because it's, it's time we started opening up. We're all smart enough, the people in this town are smart enough, and the area residents on what to do to protect themselves and still have some type of economy.
I like your idea, Bear, because I think everybody in this room knows that May 18th means June 1st. Now, when June 1st gets here, then they're gonna go June 18th. And, and our businesses downtown cannot, they can't withstand it, they can't, they can't do it. I mean, we're gonna have more empty buildings in this town if something isn't done.
And, you know, I'm not looking to sue anybody or that stuff. Maybe, no one's ever talked to us about what we need here. No one. No one's ever talked to any community, had a community meeting, what we need and assistance. These businesses aren't getting the help. That's where we started our own loan program to help them out. Because you know what I mean? We, we all grew up in this town, we know.
There's not one business on the main street that would not stay closed for this if they got some money. Not one business owner gets any money. I mean, imagine just in telling you to live. You have no money coming in, but the only one you're gonna see every day is the, is the mailman.
Yeah.
And people say, well, you're closed, it's cheaper. No, you still have to have your, your coolers going, you know, in restaurants and in bars. You still got electricity, you have minimums, you still have your water, you, it's, it's still $1,000 a month per business that you have to pay.
Well, I, I heard a quote from one moron councilman, good thing he's not from Minnesota. Thank God you're far away.
I thought you were gonna say, good thing he's not here.
No, it's, he said, I'd rather, I'd rather bury him than in debt than bury him. I'm assuming he's not talking about himself. Can you imagine making a comment like that? Because you know the anguish people's livelihood got, take you years to catch up. And some of these states are doing the common sense thing, you know, what works would like to do here might not work in Minneapolis where you got heavy concentrations. And I think no one's given us any consideration. We're just like an ugly stepchild world Minnesota.
Well, I said it a long time ago that, you know, an election year and stuff happens, it really doesn't make any difference what we think up here. Because one of the suburbs or the cities cancels us out.
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have the people up here to, we don't have that many. You know, we can voice our opinion, but you see what that does for us? Absolutely nothing. We've got struggling businesses that's still been closed for a month and a half to two months. You know, they're paying for stuff that they can't get back, you know, I just feel sorry for them. And then you have somebody that's open, that's making money hand over fist.
Yep.
You know, there's, there's no fair thing here. And like you says, it does go to people's minds. I, I talked to a lot of business owners. Their attitudes have definitely changed in the last two months. You know, because this is, this is life. And something's got to change.
Seems to be if you're a big business, you know, you got a whole different set of rules.
Oh, yeah.
And they said, and we all made a promise to the residents of this community and I'm not gonna make, let them make us break it. I don't care. They can come and kick me out if they want. But I'm gonna represent the people here and what's good for them, and if they either want to work with us or they don't. That's the way I look at it. Because they never came up here once. I don't know if they don't know there's a road 35 north goes this far or what.
Well, I'm sure that, I know for a fact that the governor's got a few emails and letters and stuff from a few people up here in northern Minnesota that they've never got a response back from them. And even I made a response to them. And you know what? It's like, who are you and what's wrong with? Well, it, it's about time we be heard up here. Whether it's good or bad, I, I've had it.
Well, I heard a comment from somebody, maybe it's time we have North Minnesota and South Minnesota.
Yep.
So maybe that day is coming. But that, that's my venting for today, guys, and.
I'm wondering if it might, in addition to the meeting next week, I'm wondering if it might not hurt to send a letter from the Evolith City Council to the governor with regard to our concern. I mean, as, as the public body, at least we can be on the record expressing our extreme displeasure for what's taking place.
And send it so he has to sign for it so we know he's got it.
Certified.
Certified right to him.
I think you could do it recognizing these social guidelines and distancing and still have these businesses function.
Yes.
You know, if you got a restaurant on 10 tables and they can fill six, hey?
If you take out every table in a restaurant, you're social distancing. I was at Menards yesterday, although you said, there's 350 people in there. I take water pills, I gotta go bathroom locks. There's nobody in there cleaning it when you leave.
Yeah.
Isn't that where somebody should be?
That's.
I mean, come on.
I mean, let's, let's use common sense here, just like we don't exist but these rules. And maybe it's, it's time to speak up and hey, we had enough. You either want to work with us or not.
Regardless, I'm all in favor of a meeting next week to reassess our position.
And all kind of have what I'm thinking of and we can tweak those or change them however we want. I don't know if we should notify our legislators just to, to chain of command.
Yeah, I think anything we can do in regard to official notification from the city council, I, I'd be.
Keep them in the loop too, you know, it's, because that's what I'm thinking in two weeks, if there's nothing happen, it's the, the same continuance of this, there's gonna be nothing left up here.
Well, maybe if Mr. Littlegar or somebody's around for our meeting, maybe he could come in and we can get his two cents out of it because he's down there. And no, they all, they're all working for us down there, but they get shot down from the governor because anything north of Duluth is like, we're pains in the asses. And it's time to be heard and maybe he could shed some light on this, or maybe Mr. Tommasoni, whoever wants to come to a meeting.
I mean, they, they got the big homeless issue down there. That, they did. They kicked that can down the road and those people are all vulnerable, they had no plan to help them, and now they're scrambling. You know what I mean? It's, it's their problem, they created it. We don't have that issue to any extent like that.
You know, most of our businesses downtown have been there for quite a while. They've been paying, paying sales tax for a long time. And some of the businesses pay big sales tax. You know, you think that they'd get a little respect from the governor and, and they're just not. So I think it's, since they're not being heard, I think it's time for us to step up and he's gonna hear us.
You remember the eighties, all the businesses we lost? We never did recover from that, totally. Business buildings burning, you know, people just abandoning things and when the mine starts slowing down, who's gonna support the businesses now? I mean, what Little Lake can do? But I think that, no, that's, that's my venting for tonight and the frustration, I guess. And when I read that email, they got Minneapolis, St. Paul, they don't know how to get the money to outstate Minnesota. Can you imagine that? Then there should be some people fired if they can't figure it out. Hire a private company, accounting firm to start distributing that money.
I'll take a trip down there for ours.
Yeah, we'll take the truck down.
We'll take the truck now and go pick it up, give us our check.
How many bales can we get in the back?
That's right, because they had a, a per capita formula, no one seemed to listen to the cities, but that's my venting for tonight. Anybody else have anything to add?
No.
Anyone from the audience have anything? If not, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
We could go on for hours.
This is, yeah, I'll kind, I'll have kind of a roadmap to reopening town.
That sounds good.
You know what Cory says?